Good evening, everyone. Good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Lowell zoning board of appeals public meeting for June 12th. Just a reminder that if you have a cellphone or electronic device, if you can just put on silent to not disrupt the meeting, and if you have any conversation, if you can step outside so it doesn't disrupt the public forum in the hearing, that would be appreciated. Moving on under continued business, we have none going on to new business. We have ZBA-2023-18 petition is a variance. The applicant, Steve Marshall, property located at 191 Frida Lane. Mr. Marshall has applied to zoning board of appeals seeking approval to construct a rear addition to the existing single-family home at 191 Frida Lane. The subject property is located in the suburban single-family SSF zoning district. Their proposal requires a variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from floor area FAR requirements, per section 6.1 for relief from driveway setback requirements, and any other required in the law's own ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. My name is Zena Ainsley. I'm an engineer for Maize Supreme Corporation, and I'm here with Mr. Steve Marshall and Wanda Marshall, the owners of the property. It's 191 Frida Lane. So this is an existing single-family house. What they want to do is add an addition onto the back, so you can kind of see on the plan here, existing house shown here, addition shown in the back. This addition would have a three-car garage on the first floor and rooms above. The intent is that when you look at it from the side, it's going to be flush with the existing roof line of the house now, so the total height of the house will stay the same. This addition does require a variance, as you stated, for the floor area ratio. I believe 0.35 is the maximum in that zone, and we're requesting 0.45. We were asked as well to go to the conservation commission, which is Wednesday night, because there is a wetland in the back of the property. We're about 44 feet away, closest point of the addition. We do have erosion control, and I expect that we'll kind of talk about that stuff with conservation. We were also requested by the city stormwater committee to put in a stormwater control for the roof area. We have done that. I don't know if it's something that you're interested in, but we do have a chamber underground system to hold the runoff from the new roof addition. And as part of this, so you can kind of see, the existing driveway kind of comes into a shed in the front here. We're going to expand that driveway so that it serves the garage, the side-load garage, so they would come in on the side if you're looking at the plan. And as part of this, we're going to be removing some of the other buildings on the property, a couple sheds, I think a kind of a portable garage, carport-type thing. So that's going to be coming down, and kind of an extensive deck coming off the back of the house that's going to come down as well. So that's the gist of what we're asking for, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. If there's nothing else, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of public hearings close. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing none, public hearings close. We can open questions, comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Did you get a chance to look at any of the engineering notes?
Sorry, sorry. I didn't hear you. What was that?
Did you get a chance to look at any of the engineering notes?
Yes, I believe the only comment from engineering was that they wanted a driveway permit.
Right, so right now, you need a three-foot setback off the structure, and it looks like it's flush on the structure right now. So I would say a condition would be that we move that three feet off the structure. Obviously, it can be flush with the garage.
With the garage, I assume. Yeah, but you're talking coming along the house.
Along the house, right, the existing structure. And then there was a comment about there's a lift in the plot plan.
What was that?
There's a lift shown in the plot plan?
Yeah, they did make that comment. We recognize that a lift is not allowed.
Okay.
Residential zone.
So that would be, I would say, a second condition is to resubmit without the existing lift, or at least construction without the existing lift. But I don't think there's a lot to be asking here. You meet your setbacks. As long as we can kind of hit those conditions, I'd be fine with this.
I will say one thing, too. The driveway now is flush with the side of the house here, so it is kind of a pre-existing So I don't know how they'll look at it, you know, from a pre-existing grandfather-type thing. I know we're expanding the driveway.
Would you agree to take it off the structure so it's in compliance?
Yeah, we can take it off, yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Member Hovey, and one of the things that DPD did mention was the concern about the lift. So if you, if that is something that you would adhere to, and I would be voting in favor and the condition that, you know, that be removed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It wasn't necessary, sir. It was for display anyway. I own an automotive repair facility in Draken, so I wasn't doing, planning on any repairs. I have a quote that's going to be up on talk.
Okay.
Can't be there, can't be.
Right, because that's one of the things that they said, working on vehicles is not allowed in residential homes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions, but I just want to state that having a lift doesn't mean that you're working on vehicles. I know that oftentimes, not often, but in some instances, people can have vehicles stacked in the same garage.
That's what my plan was.
So that doesn't mean you can't do that. You just can't work on vehicles. So I don't think we necessarily, if you don't mind, we don't necessarily need to worry about whether there's a lift there or not, as long as the lift is used for vehicle storage and not for vehicle maintenance.
That was the initial.
And that's what a garage is.
Could the condition, the wording, be amended, just to state no vehicle maintenance instead of no lift?
I think so, I think so, too, but I think we don't have to say that the lift can't exist, because the lift can exist, I believe, as vehicle storage.
Thank you very much.
And your existing condition plan submitted does not show pavement up against the existing house. So that might be part of the confusion, but it's not much of an ask to comply with the zoning for parking to provide a three-foot setback. So you're already doing enough work there, I think, as is, to provide that as either gravel strip or some kind of planter area. And the FAR is not a huge, it's a huge addition, I will say it's a huge, but seeing that it's a three-car garage, I kind of understand why. Was there a pool back there at one time?
It should be, a long time ago.
And that's why you had those big decks back there?
Been there seven years. The kids are gone. Grandkids don't come over, so there's no swimming in there. We got rid of the pool, yes, sir.
So garages make more sense at this stage in your life, apparently.
She's been a man, Captain. Very difficult to do stuff outside, bring groceries, and it'd be nice if she could come in.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay. Well, I think I can support this with the two setbacks, the two requests for contin- conditions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I agree with my fellow board members. I mean, the request on this is minimal on this, including the garage to get more cars off the street, which is a plus, although for that neighborhood, it doesn't seem to be a lot of street parking anyways, but it's still a plus regardless. My only question was regards to the structure itself and inside. I know the first floor, you got a game room, but then you got second floor open to below. So is that like a loft? Is it going to be like, the game room going to be a loft area, or is there above, is there like a second?
Just above, yeah, no.
If you could just talk into the microphone, sir, because we've got to get everything on record.
Sorry about that. No, just an open room.
Just so it's the game room, and then the sole second, the second floor is just all open? Yeah, and that's it?
And that's below, yes.
Okay. All right, that's why I was just, because I'm just kind of curious, because you do have the stairway, you got the stairway noted.
We got that stairway.
Yeah, yeah, and just want to make sure it's clear on that, because the stairway was noted on the, when it says open to below, just to make sure that we're on the same page with that. So, yeah, other than that, I think it'll be a great addition. You're basically expanding on, you already have a deck going back there anyways, and just be all be gone, just take, it's just replacing the deck and having a nice full addition, which includes three garage, three-car garage, you get more cars off the street, and having a, hopefully having a nice, fun game room to have a lot of game nights in and whatnot, so. So I would be in support of this, provided with the same conditions that have been recommended, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Nicholson. Mr. Nicholson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also support the decisions of the board as well.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. I also think that the request you're asking is very minimal, and the relief you're seeking makes sense. And again, from a public safety perspective, if you get more vehicles off the street, I think it's ideal, so. And it works for you, and it works for the neighborhood as well. So you are amenable to all the two conditions that we talked about?
Yes.
Did you have any other comments or questions before we move forward with the vote?
No, sir.
Any of my colleagues have a comments or question before we move forward with the vote? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2023-18 for variance for 191 Frida Lane. The applicant seeks a variance for constructing a rear addition, existing single-family for FAR requirement, with the two conditions, that the applicant remove three feet of paving to accommodate parking setback alongside the home, and that the garage will not be used for maintenance of vehicles.
Roll call by Mr. McCarthy, second by the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Beck.
Approve the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Proko.
Approve with conditions.
Member Nicholson.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming up this evening. Thank you, folks. Moving on to our next scheduled agenda item under new business, we have ZBA-2023-19. The petition is a variance. The applicant is 65 Wellington Ave LLC. 65 Wellington Ave LLC has applied to the zoning board of appeals seeking approval to split the existing lot into two lots. The existing lot contains a two-family residence, and the applicant proposes to construct a new single-family on the newly created lot. The subject property is located in traditional single-family TSF zoning district. The applicant requires variance approval from the zoning board of appeals per section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, maximum floor area ratio FAR, and per section 6.1 for relief from the minimum off-seat parking requirements for Lot 1. Lot 2 requires variance approval for minimum lot size and minimum lot area per dwelling unit, and any other required in the law's own ordinance. Good evening, councilor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. For the record, my name is John Geary of Gary &amp; Gary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, 65 Wellington Street LLC, and with me tonight are two of the principals. We have Jamie Herbert and Kevin Richardson. We also have Brian Godereau of Hancock Associates, the engineer for the project. We've provided the board with a site plan, which includes a zoning chart as well as a landscape plan. We've also provided floor plans and elevations and a streetscape of the proposed new home. As the chairman mentioned, the application involves requests for variances pursuant to sections 5.1 and 6.1.4 of the city zoning ordinance. Subject property consists of an existing two-family home located on 10,388 square feet of land in the traditional single-family zoning district. The applicant's proposing to split the property into two lots. The existing two-family is identified as Lot 1 on the site plan and contains 5,000, and will contain 5,385 square feet. The proposed new lot is identified as Lot 2 and will contain approximately 5,003 square feet of land. The existing two-family is currently undergoing a complete rehab, and the applicant's proposing to construct a new single-family home on Lot 2, which will be, consist of three bedrooms, one and a half baths, and contain approximately 1,500 square feet of actual living space. Because we're proposing to split the lot, we're seeking dimensional relief for both lots pursuant to section 5.1, so we're seeking relief for, and we're also seeking relief for lack of off-street parking related to the two-family. The relief that we're requesting pursuant to 5.1 is identical for each lot. We're requesting relief for minimum lot area, lot area per dwelling unit, and floor area ratio. As I mentioned, we're seeking relief pursuant to 6.1.4 for lack of off-street parking associated with the two-family. Because there are two units there, we're required to have a total of four parking spaces for that property. We have two existing parking spaces, which are located to the left side of the property along Park Avenue. The need for the additional two parking spaces is mitigated somewhat by the availability, by the fact that this is a corner lot and the availability of on-street parking along Park Avenue and Wellington Avenue. And the site plan illustrates two parking spaces along Wellington Ave to show that there is space there. We are providing sufficient off-street parking for the proposed new home. The neighborhood which the subject property is located within is bordered by Rogers Street, Hank Street, Knapp Avenue, and Park Avenue. Most of the homes within this neighborhood are single-family homes, however, there are two families scattered about the neighborhood. The immediately abutting lots to 65 Wellington are two-family dwellings. Across the street from this property on Wellington Avenue are two single-family homes, and across the street from the property on Park Avenue is Fort Hill Park, which also runs into the Lowell Cemetery. The property is also in very close proximity to Fort Hill Park and Shed Park, which is a great benefit for residents of this neighborhood, and particularly for residents of these new units. The size of the lots which we are proposing are in character with the existing lots within the neighborhood. To demonstrate that, I've attached an exhibit to my application. You should have a copy of this exhibit, which identifies the lots. The TSF zoning district requires a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. The exhibit identifies approximately 25 lots that are less than 5,000 square feet within the neighborhood. The design of the proposed single-family home was done in a way that would complement the lot in the neighborhood. The streetscape, which we included in our submission, superimposes the home onto the lot, and you can see that on the site plan, and you should have a copy of that as well. But ultimately, that shows the board and any residents that are interested exactly what the house will look like once it's constructed, and I think the architect did a good job. So we believe that the addition of this new home on Wellington Ave and the complete rehab of the two-family, the existing two-family, will enhance the character of this neighborhood. With regard to the staff comments, the first couple of comments reiterate the relief that we're requesting. Comment number three speaks specifically to parking and points out that the staff had reviewed Google Street View imagery over the course of several dates, and that confirms that there is sufficient available on-street parking. Comment number four points out that we believe, we believe that the lot sizes we're proposing are comparable to other lots in the vicinity. I think the exhibit that I mentioned just a minute ago does a good job of showing that that is the case. Comment number five speaks to the landscape plan, so most of the landscaping on the plan is on the proposed new lot. We're happy to take any suggestions of the board or DPD staff and condition any approval on DPD approving the final landscape plan. Comment number six correctly points out that the site plan does not reflect the need for relief for floor area ratio for the new lot, for this proposed single-family home on Lot 2. The total gross living space of that home is proposed to be 2,650 square feet. However, as I said, the actual living space is closer to 1,500 square feet. Staff also recommends in comment number six, scaling back the massing of the upper story for visual effects. And I think it's important to point out that the gross, gross living space takes into consideration the unfinished basements, roofed porches and balconies, and accessible attic space. If we were to cut any of those features from the design of this home, I think it would detract from the design and the value of the home. But again, the actual living space is, it's 1,500. I'd suggest that the proposed home is a modest-sized home and fits the character of the neighborhood. The required floor area ratio for this district, you know, this particular neighborhood, I would suggest that most of the homes would not meet the floor area ratio if they had to meet it in today's zoning code. So with that, at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Brian. He'll go through the site plan, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Geary. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Brian Godereau with Hancock Associates with the civil engineers and land surveyors on this project. So just to touch base quickly on a couple of technical items, John did a great job describing the project. Existing utilities are available in Wellington Avenue for the new home. Topographically, the lot is somewhat sloped from Park down Wellington, so there's probably a four-to-five-foot grade change between the existing house and where the new house will be located. As a part of that, we were sensitive to an existing shade tree that currently resides in between where the new house is proposed and the existing home. So with the driveway being on the left-hand side, we're specifically choosing to install a retaining wall to limit our disturbance in that slope and allow the shade tree to be retained. And to continue on landscaping, we have issued an exhibit, or a schematic landscape plan that shows two additional shade trees on the newly formed lot, as well as streetscape The new structure will have two parking spaces, one in the garage, one in the driveway, and while not part of this specific application, we did take a look at stormwater and impervious cover, and there's a slight increase of impervious, pretty de minimis, because there's an existing driveway and a garage there. Should this application be successful, we will be working with Mike Stewart and the stormwater team as a part of the building permit application to address any stormwater concerns in the area. Also, one key point I want to call out, the existing garage is 10 and 1/2 feet off of the property line, so when we were citing the new home, we were able to move the new structure to 12 and 1/2 feet off that eastern property line. So from where the garage sits today, we're going to be shifting it as much as we can towards what is the existing two-family house. And with that said, I'll turn it back over to John.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Brian. So we believe that the requested relief can be granted without any detriment to the public good. In fact, completing the total rehab of the existing two-family and constructing a new single-family home is consistent with the city's master plan and sustainable Lowell 2025's housing choice plan. The city's in the middle of a housing crisis. These additional units will have a positive impact on that These additional units will have a positive impact on that crisis. There's also a lack of middle housing within the city, and this one home does make a difference by filling that gap of lack of middle housing. And I'll close by saying that I heard from somebody today that there are currently only 17 single-family homes on the market in the city right now, and six of those homes are in Belvedere. As a city, we need to keep doing whatever we can do to help alleviate the housing crisis. By adding, by rehabbing these two, the two-family units and adding an additional home, we're taking a step in the right direction, and we should continue to do that. So with that, I would turn it back to the board. We're happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Geary.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I have, I just want to provide to the board some pictures that we took of the streetscape, just showing the lack of parking, the lack of cars in the area.
Yes, of course. All right, thank you, Councilor. We're going to move the hearing to the public. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Yep. If you want to come to the lectern, just name and address for the record and just, you know, share with us what you want. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name's John Allen. Not really sure how this works, so bear with me.
It's very casual. What do you want to say?
All right, great. I have a couple of letters and a petition I'd like to submit.
Of course. Thank you. If you want to share your comments, we'll review this.
Yeah, do you want me to wait, or you just want me to go?
You can speak, it's fine.
All right. Like I said, my name is John Allen. I live at 95 Bellrose Ave., one of the abutting properties to 65 Wellington. I come before you to speak about my concerns and disapproval of this project. Me and many of my neighbors' concerns are that the two zoning laws, which is developer seeks a variance law, do not believe this neighborhood or Lowell in general should be doing any development that requires putting more vehicles on the streets. There are many cars as it is with the park, Ave. being a main cut-through in the city and a busy street for the neighborhood children walking to and from the Pine Street Elementary School, walking to Shed Park for recreation, or walking in the Lowell Cemetery. My other issue, and I believe this is the more serious of the two zoning laws, is handing out a variance to build on a 5,000-square-foot lot. I understand there are similar lots of size in this neighborhood, and I would tell you it wasn't right back then when they were built, and it isn't right now. Sandwiching a single-family home on a postage stamp of a lot in between two-two-family homes 12 feet from my property line, which is 12 feet from my structure, it's my garage, that's my property line, that's less than from where I stand from where you are. I feel like that just violates my privacy and a lot of my neighbors' privacy. Is this what development has become, just build and build on top of each other in the name of more housing? Why is that the city's resident's burden to bear? If you allow this variance, I believe you're opening a door you will not be able to close. If builders and developers can build lots in this size, they will quickly be subdividing every property they can get their hands on and will not suffer any of the consequences because none of them will do it in neighborhoods or communities that they live in. Not one resident wants this house being built or putting more cars on the streets. I provided petition with 32 signatures from the surrounding houses, and honestly, I could have got more. There is only one party here that wants this built, and don't let him or his lawyer convince you in the name of more tax revenue or providing more housing to the city that they don't care about the city or our neighborhoods. They care about their bottom line. I'm imploring you, please do not grant these variances, which will forever change the character of this beautiful neighborhood and directly impact the community in a disastrous way. If this type of building and development is allowed to continue, I can promise you, it's only a matter of time that it's going to happen to everyone in this room, and you will be up here where I stand with a sick feeling in the pit of your stomach trying to convince someone why a house shouldn't be built a distance of 12 feet from you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Yeah, folks want to just come up to the lectern, name and address, and share comments you have.
Hi, my name is Harry Stecky, and I have a letter here. I want my daughter to read for me. And just to let you know, I've been in this neighborhood since 1954, and so I'll have her read the letter to you, but what he wants to do, what they want to do, from my understanding, is put a house where it doesn't belong to put more cars out in the street. So this is a letter from my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Carrie Stecky. I also live on Bellrose Avenue as well, 79. Before I read the letter, I saw the pictures that you took for parking, and they were rehabbing the house. So the tenants that were there before with the cars on both Park Avenue and Wellington were no longer there because they're not living there. So that picture does not, it's not a true and accurate picture for when the tenants were living there. Okay, so this is his letter. By way of this letter, I am respectfully requesting that the variance for 65 Wellington be denied. My name is Harry Stecky, and I have been a resident of this neighborhood my entire life, where my grandfather built the home I currently reside in, and I raised four daughters there. I am sad to see so many negative changes to this neighborhood continue to happen without any input of the neighbors, which we're doing now, actually being directly impacted by these changes. As we know, a variance is an authorized deviation from strict enforcement of a zoning ordinance in an individual case due to special hardship. Here, there is no justification for any type of special hardship. The people requesting the variance have failed to show any form of a special hardship in order to build the new house, and instead want to do it simply to benefit themselves and gain more profit instead of doing anything to benefit the Belvedere community. The applicant is the one that should be required to justify the variance, not the neighbors trying to justify the denial of the variance. The burden is on the person seeking the permit, not us. They have not been able to show us any reason that they have any hardship unique to this situation and rather simply want to be granted permission so that they can squeeze in a house in an already overpopulated area and profit for themselves. If the variance is granted contrary to any hardship being displayed, there will be increased traffic, both via foot and car, and continue to overgrow our already full neighborhood. As seen in the petition, plenty of the neighbors being directly, are being directly impacted by this request, are opposing it. The opposition of many should weigh against the wishes of one. This variance request is simply a disagreement with the zoning and is not a result of a unique hardship which is required to grant the variance. Contrary to the variance criteria that says the applicant has a hardship due to the size, location, and shape of the lot as opposed to the other lots in the neighborhood, the applicant has a hardship to support its request for the variance requested. They do not show a unique hardship other than wanting to profit. Relief here cannot be granted without substantial detriment to the public good because the already crowded community will suffer as a result of smashing more housing and people into the neighborhood, creating more unnecessary traffic and other major issues. Another argument is that it's not valid as, sorry, that the rehabilitation of the two-family dwelling and the construction of the new home will not provide the much-needed housing and tax revenue for the city, since it is the only one, one more home that will have, that will not have any substantial impact on the tax revenue from the city, and rather will have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood that I've been a part of my entire life and want nothing but the best for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, folks. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Robert Allen. I live at 97 Bellrose Ave. I'm here tonight to speak on my concerns and my disagreement with this new house which is proposed to be built behind me. My neighborhood is already busy. With the current neighbors and the public, we constantly have children, parents walking to and from Shed Park, the cemetery, and the Pine Street School. A new house, new house will add more vehicles and traffic to the area. Street parking is limited, especially in the wintertime, and my parking is, my only option is on the street. Snow removal will also be altered and more difficult. My general privacy will be disturbed, having this house so close to me as my bedroom window faces this house. Noise pollution will increase with the construction of this home and will remain after it is built with more vehicles. Placement of condensing units for this new home could be right next to mine. Even a window shaker, being as close as we are, will be loud for me. The character of the neighborhood will be changed. The multifamily surrounding this proposed home were built in the 1800s and all fit together. This new home will look out of place among these homes. My home being built in the 1800s has a fieldstone foundation. We get a little bit of water already to begin with in the basement. This land where this house is being built naturally absorbs rainfall and snow melting in the spring. When this house is built, there'll be no natural absorption of that water. My basement will flood every spring with this house being built there. It also threatens the ability of fire to jump from this house to my home and the other Our neighborhood will lose character, green space, parking, natural drainage, safety, and privacy with the construction occupancy of this proposed home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Emily Gerttenbach. I live at 124 Park Avenue East. As noted by the property owner's representative, this new lot will be removing the garage for the existing two-family unit, and their proposal does specifically mention, as they called out, that there are not every day a lot of cars parked along Park Avenue East due to the presence of Fort Hill Park. However, I live facing the park, and there are a lot of people who walk on the street itself every day, back and forth, both children going to school, residents moving between homes, and people enjoying our city's largest open green space. They're moving from Fort Rogers Park through Fort Hill Park and into Shed Park. And as you can traverse through Fort Hill Park to connect between the two, that's not accessible to a lot of people. The trails are very bumpy, there's roots, there's, you know, cracked pavement, so the street is often the fastest and, for many people, easiest way to go. There is no sidewalk that runs the entire length of Park Avenue on either side. So if we remove the on-street, off-street parking for this two-unit house where there will be approximately, we'll say maybe two to four cars, possibly more based on who lives there, then we're going to be increasing the parking on the street, which will bring moving cars closer to pedestrians walking as they enjoy our open spaces. And that, to me, does concern me as a potential detriment to the public good and to the enjoyment of our city's parks. Additionally, construction of a new single-family house in the Belvedere neighborhood, you know, while I understand the need for more housing in Lowell, this does not directly address the even greater need for more affordable housing within the city. I feel, having read the documentation online submitted by the property owners, that they are operating as a for-profit LLC and are seeking to generate additional profit off of a home in a high-priced neighborhood, which is them generating profit in a way that creates an uncomfortable and in ways dangerous situation for both the existing residents of the neighborhood as well as the city's residents at large who are simply trying to enjoy our green spaces. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Good evening.
No, I'm at 71 Bellrose Avenue, and I did submit a letter, so can I assume that it was read?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to speak to two or three points that I think are important. One, that this should set a precedent. That really scares me. I don't want to see this happening in other parts of the city, whether I live there or not. And also, the fact that this particular home should have its occupiers have a beautiful view of the park, that is supposed to be an argument for a variance, that they should have a beautiful view? That's ridiculous. That's the most specious argument I've ever heard. And also, I think the fact that moving, what they are planning to do with the property as it started, and they're renovating already, proves that they must have had an idea that perhaps this was going to be approved, because why would you start a major renovation before you were really certain what the outcome of this hearing was going to be? That also bothers me. And the fact that you should look to this as perhaps adding to the stock of the city's housing by destroying maybe a part of our neighborhood so that we should improve the city's stock of housing? I certainly would be against that, and I also think that argument wouldn't appeal to anybody in the entire city, especially where we're getting another property tax increase. I see that is not my concern that we should add to the stock of the city. Furthermore, if people want to come into Lowell and we don't have the room for them, we have Tewksbury and Chelmsford and Drake it and every place where they can move to, and I don't want to squeeze them into our neighborhood so it makes our neighborhood less attractive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. My name is Virginia Meyer. I live with my husband Mark at 64 Wellington Avenue. It's right across the street from the lovely rehab that was built across the street from us. We lived for 19 years across from that house, that nothing had been done to it, and it was really falling apart. We were so glad to see that it was sold and that it was going to be renovated, and then we were happy to watch all the improvements that had been done. But we kept saying to ourselves, how could somebody buy this house and now put, I'm guessing, several hundred thousand dollars, I have no idea, into the rehab and sell it for a profit? Because who does that without making a profit? Well, now I know where the profit's going to come from, the house next door. Okay, I want to speak to a couple of points that Mr. Geary made. There are other homes in the area on smaller lots. Well, that house was built in 1910. Our house across the street is probably the newest house in the area, I'm kind of guessing, 1956. Maybe there was a reason why the zoning laws were changed so that the dimensions should be more applicable. We have a very strange-shaped lot, and maybe the zoning was created to eliminate that in the future. One of my neighbors already addressed the fact that a lot of people walk along Park Avenue East, that butts aside of the two-family house that was just rehabbed and our house. There's no sidewalk along there, so one has to walk into the street. I drove every day for 19 years to Lowell High School, going up Wellington to the corner and made a right-hand turn onto Park Avenue, and there was frequently traffic coming that I had to stop suddenly for. Cars come very quickly along there. I know that's a different issue, but with more street parking, that will only become more of a problem. While the construction was going on across the street from our house, there were many construction vehicles there, which was wonderful to see but very hard to drive around. So now I'm being asked if I would approve of more cars parked on Wellington Avenue, and I certainly would not. And please don't argue with me that you're going to put a couple of shade trees between the two-family house and the new house. There's not going to be enough room for those shade trees to get very big or last very long, so I have no, no feeling about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Judith Ottley. I live at 84 Bellrose Ave. I'm three houses or two houses away from this. I'm three houses or two houses away from this house that we're discussing. So I'm not prepared to talk, so I don't have anything written, but I went to City Hall because my mother died and I wanted my father to move in. We have a three-car garage, 55-foot room overhead. We can fit, including the three-car garage, we could fit 10 cars in our driveway, but we were denied. This is just my dad, that's it, my quiet, sweet dad, that we wanted to live there, and we followed the laws. That's what we did. We didn't try to change it because they told us this is the way it's zoned. Our side of the street is zoned for single-family, and we didn't try to change anything. We are not making any money off of anything. I just wanted my dad, my 90-year-old dad, I would love for him to live with us upstairs in our garage, and we've never done it illegally. We followed the laws. I'm asking you to not allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Hey, good evening. My name's John Steckey. You can tell us a lot of Steckeys living on Belrose Ave. Family neighborhood. Say hi to all my neighbors that are here. I live at 82 Belrose Ave. I live in a 9,800-square-foot lot. So are you telling me that if we're going to approve this, my yard can become a house lot? That is a very scary thing for our neighborhood. If this happens, the picture of our neighborhood will change forever. It is a family, we have people moving in. I bought the house across the street from where I grew up, because I love that neighborhood so much. We have people buying the grandparents' houses to move into our neighborhood. Why? Because it's a beautiful place to live. You start squeezing houses in where they don't belong, you will forever change the face of this neighborhood. And maybe I should be happy, because maybe you want to buy my house, and maybe I can put a house next to mine. You can do it. If you can do this, if they can do this, you better let them do it for mine, because there's no other reason except they're making money on it. I don't need to sell my house. I don't want to sell my house. But at the same time, look at the people that are here. We care about this neighborhood. And by the way, helping the housing, there was already a two-family there, there was already people living in it, whether or not it was a nice house or not, it did need work. And by the way, you want to make Lowell beautiful? I got a couple houses that you should go look at, and you should go rehab those. Do you know we have people from Rogers Street parking in our neighborhood? Now, it's these people right here. They can't even park in front of their own house, and you want to add more cars? That picture you sent was beautiful. The pictures I just looked at that you had, they were beautiful, there was nobody there. My brother and I rode by there Saturday morning at 8:00 in the morning, and I should have taken the picture. I'm really sorry I didn't take the picture. That whole street was lined with cars. I can park, I live right next to Judith, where'd you go? I live right next to Judith. I can put 10 cars in my driveway. And by the way, sometimes my neighbors park in our driveways when the snow comes, and you want to put more cars on the street? We already can't get by when the plow can't get by because cars are in the way. It doesn't make sense. I get you guys want to make money. I get it. And I'm happy that there are people that build houses for people to live in, but building one house and squeezing it into this neighborhood is not the way to go. Please contact me, I'll show you a few houses that need to be rehabbed. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carrie Anavahi. I live at 57 Belrose Ave. And a lot of people made the comment, it was very appreciated when we saw the renovation of that home, because it was sort of like one of the rundown neighbor, homes in the neighborhoods. It was nice, and we were like, oh, this is great, it's bringing value to the property. My history with Park Ave, there's not enough parking on Park Ave. When I take my son in the stroller to the cemetery or Shed Park, and if I do take him down Park Ave, I do it with dread, because cars come really fast. And the previous tenants in that home, they just park on the curb, so then there was even less space to walk. So if you take, if you look when people take walks in the neighborhood, a lot of them prefer to walk on Belrose Ave or Hoyt, because it's a little bit tricky on Park Ave. So I don't believe there's enough parking space there, because cars tend to drive very fast. And I guess my question, my next thing was like, why? Like, it was so great to rehab the two-family, why try to squeeze another home on that lot? You know, especially when it's so close to 95, 97 Belrose Ave. I don't think the lot, it wouldn't, I don't think it would fit. It's a nice, new build, and it's probably going to look nice, but I don't think it fits in the character of the home. I think in that neighborhood, people like having a yard space, an outdoor green space, so I really don't think it would fit the character, and I really don't think it solves the greater issue of housing in Lowell. And as John mentioned, there's a very, much looks like it's abandoned house on Hoyt, if you're interested. I just drove down Middlesex, and there's another abandoned one that looks like it needs, I think there's a for-sale sign somewhere down across from UMass Lowell. So there's a lot of other properties in Lowell where there's potential for profit. I don't think squeezing another home on that lot. And also, I was like, okay, if the council members do agree, which I think a lot of us say no, like, why wasn't it considered, instead of asking for variance for all these things, why wasn't it considered to build a smaller property and build more off-street parking? Like, our house at 57, you can tell that at some point there wasn't any parking, and somebody, or the previous owners carved out some space for a single car. And then a couple of years ago, we had the opportunity to carve out and make that space even bigger, because when it snows, the snowplows don't do a good job of cleaning the street. So we have to squeeze two cars into that small driveway to kind of just make it better for when we need to get out for work. So that's my income.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Karen Poisson. I live at 54 Hoyt Ave. I'm on the corner of Hoyt and Waverly. I bought my home there in July of 2002 because I love the neighborhood. I spoke to the neighbors prior to me making that purchase of what they thought of the neighborhood. As the previous speaker, one of my neighbors said, we have landlords up on Rogers Street and Nesmith Street who rent out, and they cannot park their vehicles there. I'm on the corner lot, I have them parked all beside my house on the right, directly in front of my own home. I come home from work at midnight, and I have no place to park. I have to park on my neighbor's on her side of the street, because all these people that are renting up on Nesmith and Rogers Street, the landlord says, oh, you can park down there anywhere you want. Don't worry about it. I've had run-ins with them, I've called the police on them, nothing happens. They come down and park there during blizzards. I can't even park in my own spot when a blizzard, and I'm fear of being towed out of there with the regulations of the snow removal and stuff. We all walk around that neighborhood, and to put a house on that tiny little lot, I know they want to make money. I understand that. Everybody wants to make money. And yes, they did a beautiful job rehabbing that house, the duplex that was there. The last thing we need is more traffic, more cars. We've had a bad accident there a little over a year ago on the corner right across the street from me, because somebody blew the stop sign. We came before the council not too long ago, asking if they could please put a stop sign on Waverly to stop them from coming down. It's a cut-through, they just fly down there, go right down, and they even bought them out because they come down to bypass the traffic light. Hoyt Ave and Park Ave is just a cut-through. They speed back and forth up and down those streets. And like the other ones all said, when you're walking, you have to keep your eyes open which way the cars are coming. It's just too many cars in the neighborhood to begin with, and the people that don't even live in the neighborhood are parking down in our neighborhood. And then when you have functions going on at Shed Park and the track or anything going on, all of Wellington has cars that are coming up there because there's no place for them in the park. They're on Nap Ave, and then they start working their way on Hoyt and Wellington, and it's, you know, they were enjoying their time at the park. We just don't need another house added in that neighborhood. The neighborhood is fine the way it is, they did a beautiful job rehabbing it, but think of the residents that have lived there. And all my, my neighbors that I've spoken to when I bought the home have bought, like they said, their grandparents' home, their parents' home. There's a reason for that. They feel safe there, they like the neighborhood, neighbors all get along, we just keep to ourselves, you can have fun, you can, it's a safe neighborhood to be walking around, but not when you have all these cars coming through. And we did approach council and ask for some kind of help with the speeding going on in the neighborhood. We got nowhere. Put a stop sign up, nowhere. The last thing we need is more cars, and you can't say, oh, you're going to have two cars maybe. Well, then two people move in, and two more people move in, the kids get older, they get cars, we don't need any more in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Sharon King. I am in a butter also on Park Avenue East, and I really just came to support my neighbors. I will be just as close to this new house, and it is too close, the traffic, the lack of parking, it's just not a good idea. The two-family looks beautiful, and it does improve the neighborhood, but an extra house on that size lot is not right.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
William Daley, 117 Hoyt Avenue. I've been there since 1966. If you take a look at this picture here, you can see that Wellington Avenue from Rogers Street right up to Park Avenue East is nothing more than a Speedway. Hoyt Avenue and Belrose Avenue have stop signs, and I was told that some time ago, there was a fatality at the corner of Belrose and Wellington. But somewhere between 20 and 25 miles an hour, they come off Rogers Street up to the top of Park Avenue East. So traffic definitely is a situation problem on Wellington Avenue. I'm down at the bottom, and I, I get water in my cellar from, obviously from Fort Hill. In the house just beyond me, further towards Rogers Street, they get some seepage, but not as much as I get. So there's definitely a water problem there, but, and traffic is definitely a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else? Good evening, ma'am.
I don't have anything prepared. I'm Kim Carner. I live at 23 Belrose Ave, but I also am in a butter with, I own 99101, and my tenants aren't here because they're not feeling well, but they also oppose it as it's difficult already to park. And another big issue that hasn't really been brought up is where are they going to put all their snow? As it is right now, there's nowhere to put snow, and you put two undersized house lots, and, and they're going to have to dig a spot for their vehicles and for their walkways, and where are they going to put all their snow? You're overburning a neighborhood that is beautiful, and people have nice yards, and we have parking. I live on a house down the street with almost 12,000 square feet, so you're telling me, like John, so I can just put a 5,000-square-foot, make another 5,000-square-foot lot and put another house in so that all my neighbors can all be crammed in? This is ridiculous. It's not just one house that's an undersized lot, the two-family's too small at 5,000 square feet, and the single-family's too small at 5,000 square feet. Please don't ruin our neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Jennifer Jolly. I live at 130 Park Avenue East. Basically, there are zoning laws, rules, for a reason, and I would just like to go to what type of a precedent this would set. Based on Mr. Geary's exhibit, which I looked at, which shows the 25 houses in the neighborhood that are on lots that are less than 5,000 square feet, I would estimate that on my lot, which is a house with a relatively small footprint, but a very big lot, that I can probably put two houses with that variance. It will change the character of the neighborhood, and it is a lovely neighborhood. I also have a question. You put up a 2,500-square-foot house in that neighborhood, what is the estimated selling price range that you would be looking at?
Ma'am, if you wanted to address...
Okay. So I'm, I'm basically assuming that today, that 2,500-square-foot house is something that would go for no less than $600,000. That does not add to the affordable housing stock in Lowell. So again, if you told me that it was a $350,000 house, I might be more apt to say, okay, it's worth the sacrifice. However, to sell another home that's at a price point that is too high to encourage young people to become homeowners in Lowell strikes me as more con than pro. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Before we open the questions and comments to the board, Mr. Geary, do you want to comment on anything?
Yes, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, just a few additional comments. So the idea of submitting the photos showing the, the view down the street and along Park Ave East was simply to indicate that there's sufficient space, there's sufficient area for on-street parking, and, you know, most neighborhoods have a lot of on-street parking. This neighborhood is no different. With regard to Mr. Allen's concern that the, of the closeness of his home, his structure to this structure, you know, one thing we could suggest or offer is to flip the property so that the garage is on the east side of the lot as opposed to the, the opposite side, and that, you know, the garage is not living space, and there'll be some separation there. I'd also just suggest that, you know, every single home that we can produce in a city such as Lowell is important to impact the housing crisis. We do not have large tracts of land where we can create new single-family housing, so it's basically done one lot by one lot, and you can't discount any particular lot. It's, if you can produce housing, it's a good thing, considering the, the housing crisis that we're in. There was talk of the, of the LLC being a for-profit LLC. Of course, they're a for-profit LLC, but I think it's also important to point out that this corner would, it would be an investment of, in excess of $700,000 to this corner of the neighborhood, and that's significant, and I don't know how that can detract from the, from the character of the neighborhood. So with that, I'll turn it back to the board and happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you, councilor. We're going to open the questions and comments to the board. The chair organizes. Mr. Prokop, Mr. Prokop, floor's yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is a lot of opposition on this particular property. I would be curious, again, you know, knowing my stance, that I believe in working with the neighbors and trying to come to some common ground. the neighbors and trying to come to some common ground. And my question would be, was this addressed at the neighborhood group?
Mr. Herbert went around and knocked on several of the butter's doors, spoke to a couple at least, didn't get response from a few others, but yes, there was an attempt made.
Okay. Because I know that the Belvedere has a neighborhood group that they meet every month. It's, to me, would be something that could have been addressed so that at least they could feel that they were being listened to instead of the board. But aside from that, my concern is the size of the development. You know, breaking the 10,388 square feet into two, again, I do have the concern, and I do, I do share the concern of the neighbors that they feel that the safety is the issue because there would be more cars on the road, more parking. It looks, I drove by there yesterday. The development looks very, you know, very appealing, and I would have thought that it was sufficient, but, again, I'm not comfortable with the fact of this being put into two properties, but I would, I would, I would like to hear the opinion of my other board members because there is a lot here for variance. It's a lot of square footage that I have some concerns about. I'll pass it on, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can appreciate the concerns of the neighborhood. Some of them, speeding, lack of sidewalks, traffic in the area, is really an issue that needs to be taken up with the city. Because whether this project is approved or gets denied, you're still gonna have speeding issues. Sidewalks still won't be put in there. We're asking to approve two off-street parking spots on a corner lot, so whether it's one on Wellington and one on Park, or both on Wellington, I mean, I don't think it's gonna be a huge inconvenience to the neighborhood, but understanding people use park to get, get around, I mean, I think the major concern there has to do with the safety and, you know, the two families there now, and it was there in the past, so I don't see, you know, that adding to an unsafe environment. But it's definitely something that, you know, has to be addressed if the neighborhood feels that way with the city. Now, Lot 2, I think it's a good faith gesture to flip it and get the garage so you get some space, but we're not really looking at setbacks here because it looks like it meets frontage, side, front, and rear setbacks. So, you know, that's not something we're even taking up with this project. So, there's pros and cons. I think, you know, the neighborhood has some legitimate concerns, and I think, you know, I'd like to see those addressed, but we can only vote on what's in front of us. So, I'll listen to the rest of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey, for your comments. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank the applicant for a thorough package. I think that we have enough documents here to see clearly what we are looking at, although I would have appreciated a little more detail on the existing parking at the two-family house off of Park View.
Park Ave.
Park Ave. Because we don't have that listed dimensionally. It doesn't comply with city zoning. It goes from property line to the building, and I don't know if it complies with the depth for two spaces. We don't have dimensions on the plan, in any case, on that piece. That being said, the existing lot is in a traditional two, a traditional single-family district, which is boarded by suburban single-family district. And it exists as a two-family. So, you're already receiving some grace because you're a two-family in a single-family zone. So, as a two-family in a single-family zone, if it were two single families, it would be asked to comply with 14,000-square-foot lot, and you're only at 10. And you're coming in front of us, asking to add a third unit that would, to me, if you're, this is a single-family zone, remember that. You have a two-family, a single-family zone. And I just want to point out that it's actually seven variances you're asking for, as I see it. Maybe I have it wrong, but you're asking for three variances per lot for lot size, dwelling unit. I'm skipping over the last one that, let me see if I opened it up. Minimum lot area per dwelling unit and floor area ratio. So, you've got those three per lot, so that's six there.
Correct.
And then, you're doing something that I'm really against. In this neighborhood of single families, you're asking for relief from parking because you don't want to provide four off-street parking spaces when currently, the existing two-family provides four off-street parking spaces. So, you're taking a compliant situation and making it worse in order to provide another single family. And I agree with you. I'm part of the Lowell Forward Planning Group, and we're talking about how we're needing affordable housing, how we need housing, but we need affordable housing. Adding a $600,000 unit, housing unit to the city is affordable for some, but not for the median income in the city by any stretch. It's not affordable. It's really asking for a lovely home for someone in Belvedere to enjoy, but I don't feel that, I mean, we don't need luxury housing in the city. We need affordable housing in the city, and we need affordable housing in the city in a manner that makes sense. And I see this as, you gave us that lovely document for lots in the neighborhood, less than 5,000, 6,000, 7,000, but every lot on Park Ave. is, is larger than 7,000 square None of them are in your color code. All of the lots adjacent to this property on Park Ave. are larger lots. I just, the piece that I have the biggest problem with is the fact that you already have a two-family, a single-family neighborhood, and you're asking for one more on top of that, and, and you've got seven variances that you're looking for, and you don't have the parking to support it off-street. Those are like, ugh. I, I don't know what you could do to redesign this to make me feel I could support it right now at this point, but I'm just struggling mightily with this, as the neighbors are, that this is, you're right, we need housing in the city. We need to find a way to do it. We need to have a zoning ordinance that supports more housing in a manner that makes sense. Right now, we have what we have. Right now, we have 7,000-square-foot lots. Right now, we are, I, as a member of the board, have to make a judgment based on the zoning that we have in front of us, not your little map here from 1910, housing lots that are less than, you know, 5,000 square feet. That doesn't matter. The zoning is the zoning. What was done in 1910, that's been superseded. No longer in this district is 5,000 or less 5,000-square-foot lots allowed, without the zoning board weighing in on that. I don't want to be too wordy here, but I just don't know how you meet the zoning criteria. This is not meeting the zoning criteria in my eyes at all.
Well, we don't, I mean, we're, we're here before the zoning board of appeals, asking for variances, so we understand we don't meet the existing zoning. With regard to parking, we did take a, a close look at, at the existing single-family, you know, Lot 1 on the site plan, to see if we could squeeze in two spaces on off-street parking. And we're giving up, you know, open space by doing that because of the slope of the, of the rear of the property, that's difficult to do. So, you know, considering that, that stretch of Wellington Ave. is, is pretty open, there would appear to be sufficient on-street parking that could satisfy the additional two spaces that we need. And, you know, with regard, I don't think we ever suggested that this was affordable housing. This is middle housing, I would suggest. We, I understand that we need affordable housing in the city. We also need all housing in the city.
I agree that if we have more housing in general, maybe some of that will become affordable because we'll have too much housing, which would be amazing if we ever did.
Right. Long way down the road, probably.
Down the road, right. But I think my biggest, my biggest thing, you're coming before us, asking for a subdivision on a lot that already has a two-family in a single-family district. So, we're basically going from two units on a 10,000-square-foot lot to three units, and one of them being a single-family in a single-family district. So, I'm, I'm, I think we already have enough on that lot with the two-family, in my opinion. It's kind of how I'm seeing it. And I, if it was two single families on a 10,000-square-foot lot, I might even have trouble with that.
Mm-hmm. Understood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for your comments. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I reside in the neighborhood, and I'm very familiar with the neighborhood and all the issues with regards to parking and possibly speeding and whatnot. And I went by the property earlier this weekend and kind of was visioning it, possibly if it could fit in a single-family home there. At the time I reviewed, I was like, seems like it could possibly fit. Listening to the concerns of the neighbors, and, Council, your clients have done an amazing job on rehabbing the current structure that's there.
They have, yes.
Which is, which is great. I mean, dimensionally speaking, I mean, I was thinking it possibly could fit. Where, as Dennis pointed out, where I'm struggling is with the parking a little bit. It just seems, as far as parking is concerned, to Dennis's point, it looks like we're taking something that doesn't have a hardship presently because it is a two-family in a single-family with, for parking spaces, and creating a hardship just for that purpose. That's what I'm struggling with at this point. But that being said, as far as the dimensional items are concerned, I know, Council, you mentioned the possibility of restructure, maybe...
Flipping.
Flipping it to see if the garage can flip on the other side. But to the point also, and I know you mentioned it in your opening comments, the staff has said concerns about the size of the structure itself and whether it can be scaled down a bit, and I don't know if that's something your client may want to consider possibly doing and going back to the drawing board about to see if it's, it could be workable. Again, I'm not sure what the neighbors would think if that's the case. Maybe if something's different and something can come to a, we can come to some consensus if something on a lesser scale is put forth and...
Yeah, it's certainly something we could consider, take back to our design team and see what they can come up with, you know, possibly bring us closer to the floor area ratio requirement. I, you know, I know that the staff pointed out or depicted three homes in their comments. You know, we had the architectural team look at those homes, and I think all of those homes exceeded the, the floor area ratio. But where, yes, we can do that, and we would be happy to take a look at the design and see if there's, if there's something that's more suitable.
That being the case, I mean, I would be suggestive of possibly continuing the matter if, if the petitioner is in, you know, is willing to do so, and if the board is, is agreeable to that.
Right.
My suggestion would possibly be that. So, if they're gonna flip the garage on the other side, we're gonna need new plans anyway.
We could show that as well.
We need that. But that's, that's what I'm thinking at this point. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan, for your comments. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question. So, the Lot 1, the two-family, is that a rental right now, or is that just being flipped right now?
No, it's vacant right now, going through a complete rehab. The intent is to condominiumize it and sell the, sell the units.
That was my next question. So, being a condominium is concerning because if it's a rental, you can kind of control the parking area, how many people you rent.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, that would be my next question because as a condo, you can't control how many people live in the condo and how many cars. As a rental, you could. So, that would change a little bit of the parking situation because you can't control how many cars people own, you know, so that would be a little bit more...
Yeah, I don't know that I see the distinction there between, you know, condominium's just a form of ownership.
Correct. But you can't, if it's a rental...
Folks, I'm sorry, Mr. Nickerson. Folks, please, if you have comments, we're just, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Nickerson.
That's it, that's good. That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Gary, I think you and your clients are doing a nice job with, with the current build and kind of the rehab of that, the current property on the lot, so I appreciate that investment in the city. You know, I think I have some concerns in terms of not just parking, which is a big public safety concern as well. I do have some concerns around, you already have kind of a grandfathered kind of lot already with, with two dwellings on this lot, and you're looking to squeeze kind of more living space into this lot. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, it's, it's a hard yes or hard no. I really like the comments and suggestions by the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan, perhaps, and you seem amenable to that, Council Gary.
Yes, it would be amenable to a continuance, to allow us to go back and look at the possible redesign, show the lot on the other side. At the same time, we'll take another look at the parking and see if there's anything we can do to accomplish more off-street parking.
Thank, thank, thank you, Councilor. I know, you know, you've done a lot of projects in the city, so I know you always try to do the right thing by, not just, you know, the clients you represent, but the neighborhood and the community as a whole.
Appreciate it.
So, I know we're very mindful of that, and you are always very mindful of that, and I would also heed the suggestion of Mr. Proko, maybe he commented about maybe just attending the neighborhood group in Belvedere and just talking to the, the neighborhood group just to give, have them more of a, have them give more input and just see how we can meet kind of in the middle somewhere.
Sure.
Again, I think housing is very important. I agree. I think a lot of people agree housing is important, the stock, but as well, you know, it needs to be appropriately and appropriately done. And I'm not saying this is inappropriate, but as it stands right now, I think it's kind of far from appropriate housing and enable that zone, single-family. So, if we have no further comments, we're continuing the matter.
Dylan, do we have a next meeting we want to, would this continue to July or the 26th?
That's up to the board. So, there is, June 26th meeting is probably too close. The July meeting has seven items on it right now, and the meeting following that would be August 14th.
So, August 14th is open?
Yes.
And I think as a board, we wanted to cap it at 6, so we've got 7 already in the end. Okay. So, August 14th?
That would, that would work for us.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor.
All right. Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion for ZDA 2023-19 for variances at 65 Wellington Ave. to be continued to August 14th.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Ms. Callahan. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman, back.
Approved continuance. Approved continuance.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the continuance to August 14th, 2023.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to August 14th, 2023.
Member Proko.
Approve continuance to August 14th, 2023.
Member Hubby.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right. You've been approved to August 14th. We'll see you in a little bit. And just for the, for the record, this is be the official notice for the public. There will be no other further notice.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. We're moving on to the next scheduled item on the agenda. All right, moving on to other business, we have a variance extension request at 38 and 40 Swift Street. The variance extension request at 38 to 40 Swift Street, the applicant is requesting a six-month variance extension for the variance issued on June 27, 2022. They're asking for an extension to December 27, 2023. Folks, folks on the hallway, the, the still hearing and other applicants, if you folks Apologies, Mr. Lania. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Lania, Cornerstone Land Associates, representing the applicant, 505 Capital Partners. We're before you tonight to request an extension to the variance request that was approved by this board in order for us to complete the subdivision of the property. We are currently scheduled to be before the planning board on Thursday, June 22nd, to finalize that subdivision plan as a definitive with the planning board, so that we can then move forward to obtaining the building permits and, you know, getting the construction of that single-family house completed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lania. Does my colleagues have any question? This is an extension request. Mr. McCarthy, do you have any comments, sir?
I just want to mention, I, I think we found out maybe last year, there's only one extension granted, a six-month extension. So this is it, just so you're aware of it. I believe that's right.
Well, I, I think that the rule, or correct me if I'm wrong, they'll only allow you six months. And at the time, I think that we were doing extensions, right? Weren't you guys granting year extensions or?
Sean, I think that's what we discovered last year.
Yeah, we, we were doing it not, not by the, by law, so it's.
Right.
Yeah, my recollection is we can do one extension for six months, and then that's it.
And that's it. Before that, we were doing it not, not by the ordinance and by the.
I know, it's kind of new. So I just want to make sure you're aware of it, that's all.
They'll hear from the next one, too. So I guess I'm hoping that rule applies to all the new ones.
It does.
All right, excellent.
Thank you.
Only thing I had was, maybe Dylan, maybe you can answer the question. My concern, not concern, but my question, again, I don't know if there's some, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Dylan. They recorded the variance with the Registry of Deeds. Does that, doesn't that mean that the variance is now set and there's no, no need for an extension? I don't, I'm, I'm, my, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to recollect that, what kicks it that they have to come back for an extension. I mean, I thought if they record it, that's making, that's taking action on the variance, that means it's there.
Our understanding, uh, taking action on the variance is pulling a building permit, applying for a building permit.
Okay. All right. Nope, that's, that was my only, that was my only real question. Just, just, yeah, okay. We'll go from there. Thanks.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Mr. Nickerson, did you have any comments about this extension request, sir? Okay. Mr. Proko, did you have any, Mr. Hubby, did you have any comments? Okay.
No questions.
All right, thank, thank you, thank you.
One more thing, through you, Mr. Chairman. There was a, this was granted with conditions, Mr. Lania. It was, the applicant should submit a revised site plan to DPD. That includes front walkways, calculation, calculations of impervious cover and landscaped areas. Has that been done?
That is, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. If it's, when we get these, I want to check if there's conditions involved. I just want to see what the status of that, those conditions are, so.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Thank you, thank you, sir. Mr. Lania, you, you are clear on how, how this works? This is a one-time kind of?
Yes, sir. I do understand. And I, and my rec, my understanding is that from now on.
Yeah.
One variance, one six-month extension, and then that's it.
Yeah, be, before that, we were doing it not, not in line with the bylaws and ordinance and.
I understand. Thank you for clarification.
Yeah. All right. If there's no comments, we have a, a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion for a variance extension request at 3840 Swift Street for a six-month extension.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by, by Mr. Hubby. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved the extension.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve extension for six months.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the variance extension.
Member Proko.
Approve variance extension for six months.
Member Hubby.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, Mr. Lania, you've been approved of the extension request. Going on to our next agenda item under other business, a variance request for 90 Lupine Road. The applicant is requesting a six-month variance extension for the variance issue on June 15, 2022. They're seeking an extension to December 15, 2023. Can you talk a little bit about that, Mr. Lania?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chairman. Kenneth Lania, Cornerstone Land Associates, representing the applicant this evening. Also with me is the property owner, Hushy Ashva, who assisted me with this particular purchase at my house. We are in the middle of transferring the property. We ran into a little bit of a title issue with the previous owner that I was working with. That has since been cleared up, but it was just recently cleared up last week. The transfer is aiming to happen then in the next three weeks, and then I'll pull a building permit. That house will be constructed and completed before the end of October.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Lania. Any members have any comments with this extension request? Mr. Ms. Callahan, Vice Chairman?
Three, Mr. Chairman. Yep, so I specifically recall this one, that we previously had a variance.
Yes.
It lapsed.
Correct.
And you came back before us again.
Yes, sir.
And because this is one, this is a situation where we were granting extension after, after extension, and then we came to find out.
That was it. We were, we were stuck in the COVID, I guess, world, and.
It was all valid, too, yeah.
Yep, understandable, understandable. But just as, it sounds to me like things are getting in.
This is it.
Things are in flux, and they're going to, they're going to be going forward. So I guess if it turns out, you come back before us again on this, Mr. Lania, I don't know.
Yeah, well, we're going to.
On a, on a third, third petitioned variance. First of all, it's going to cost you a lot of money, but.
Believe me, I don't want to. This is it.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Any other comments by my colleagues, Mr. Proko, Mr. Hubby, Mr. Nickerson? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion for a variance extension request at 90 Lupine Road for a six-month extension.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Hubby. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved the extension request.
Member.
Approve extension for six months.
Yeah. Member McCarthy.
Approve the variance extension request.
Member Proko.
Approve extension for six months.
Member Hubby.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, Mr. Lania, you've been approved.
Thank you very much for your time.
Best of luck with your projects.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Have a good night, sir. All right. Continue on to other business. We have an administrative review at 17 Montreal Street, 264, 266 Plain Street. We have communication from counselor and representative that they were requesting a continuance for this matter. What's the wish of the board? Do we want to entertain the continuance?
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
I don't have any, yeah. I would, the continuance, I don't recall if they had an attorney the last time, but now they do. So since they do, I think a continuance would be warranted, so.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
I guess the only other thing I would have to ask Dylan, are we going to get any other information from the petitioner? I know you wrote a, or, yeah, you wrote a memo with regards to the last administrative, last time this was on for administrative review, but nobody showed up, and we had no information or contact from them. But, and you highlighted some concerns. So is there any, is there going to be communication with the applicant?
Yeah, after that meeting, I communicated what needed to get done with the applicant. The only thing they have done so far is submitted the recorded special permit decision.
Okay.
So there are still others, the other steps from the memo are still outstanding, and that's been provided to his new attorney.
Okay. So, but you'll still be in touch with counsel for them about any other concerns you may have, and possibly, if so, we'll get a new memo possibly of what, what's going on, or is it?
Probably won't have time to draft a new memo, but the only change from the past memo, I can recirculate that memo.
Okay.
With members who weren't here before. But the only change is that the special permit, recorded special permit decision has been submitted. The other issues are still outstanding.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because last memo, last memo was in March, your, your prior, your memo from, because that's the last time it was before us, our administrative review. So, okay, sounds, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Thank, thank you, Mr. Rucker, for that.
I, I do have a question. Have they given a timeline for any of the other conditions they're going to meet? Or have they gone, I mean, I know last time it was radio silence. I think they moved from one attorney to, obviously they have a new one. Have they reached out and said, this is a timeline to meet these other conditions? Or is it just, yeah, we did this one thing?
They have not. They have not.
Okay. So, so how long would this be continued for? Because, I mean, we're going to be over a year, and they're not really meeting any of the conditions we set for us.
No, I think we're just looking to continue the administrative review for them to show up, because they didn't show up. No one appeared the last time. I believe they were represented previously by Attorney Cox. And now, I, my understanding is Attorney Flood is now representing them, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
So, and Attorney Flood, by the memo that Chairman Peck had mentioned, Attorney Flood sent us.
Yeah.
Communication, saying that she was unavailable. So I think we're just agreeing to continue this hearing for another day. And did she give any dates or anything, Dylan?
She requested the June 26th meeting.
Okay. I mean, that seems reasonable to me. That's the case, so.
I agree.
Thanks.
That, thank you for that. Mr. Hubby, thank you for the comment. Mr. Rucker, thank you, Mr. Callahan. If there's no other comments by my colleagues, Mr. Proko, Mr. Nickerson? All right, seeing none. Can we have a motion to continue to our June meeting?
What's the date we're continuing to?
June 26th. June 26th.
Thank you. Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion for administrative review at 17 Montreal Street and 264, 266 Plain Street to be continued to June 26th.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Mr. Proko. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved continuance.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance to June 26, 2023.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to June 26th.
Member Proko.
Approve continuance to June 26, 2023.
Member Hubby.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve continuance to the 26th.
All right, the matter before us has been approved for continuance. In other business, we have minutes for approval for May 22nd, 2023. Any comments by my colleagues? Any updates, revisions, comments, edits? I think I saw one with attendance in regard to attendance, which has been addressed. Thank you, Mr. Proko, for that, for that suggestion and comment. Any other comments and updates by my colleagues? All right, seeing none. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes for May 22nd?
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 22nd, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. All right, any other questions or comments by my colleagues before we adjourn tonight?
If I could.
Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
The applicant did not pay for their legal ad, and we'll have to resend the notice and republish and publish the legal ad in the LoL Sun. The applicant did not get the legal ad published in the LoL Sun. Do they have to resend out notice? And we'll have to publish the legal ad in the LoL Sun, and they'll be on the future agenda.
So I'm going to send another letter to me. I'm not going to have to look at the LoL Sun to get the notification, am I?
Right, they have to send out a new notice, a new notice.
To my home.
To, to your home, because it never appeared before the board.
So shouldn't have somebody sent a notice saying that it was canceled, right?
They do not send out notices.
Oh, isn't that nice?
The item was not on the agenda.
What was that?
On the agenda.
Is that right? Why do I have a letter? Yes, ma'am, it is on the agenda for the senior.
Ma'am, we, we do apologize, but it's, it's the public meeting laws, and I, I would suggest that when you get your next notice, just to make sure everything's, you have any questions or if it's actually going through, I would just check maybe the online website for the City of Lowell. I, I do apologize, ma'am. I, you know, that's out of our control. Like Dylan didn't have any control of that. We don't have any control of the public notification laws. So I, I do apologize.
I'm, I'm glad, I'm, three, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad it was just you that showed up because it was confusing. I agree.
I, I do apologize, ma'am.
Is the other night canceled as well? Was the night for the 22nd at 6:30 is canceled as well?
Yes, that is canceled.
I will let my neighbors know that.
Yeah, thank you. And, and again, this is just a, just a recommendation. If you just check the online website. I, I agree, I agree.
Mary is woman, I'm woman.
No, I, I apologize, ma'am.
Well, I travel as well.
I, I do apologize. No, I, I agree. I apologize. It's beyond our control. It's the meeting laws.
Everybody, everybody.
I know.
All right. Any other comments before we adjourn? Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to mention that the Lowell Forward Group that's been working on the master plan for zoning changes and increasing density in certain areas is providing a public workshop on Wednesday, the 21st, from 6:30 to 8:00 at the senior center. It's probably the fourth or fifth workshop. To my knowledge, all of these workshops that I've attended have really been strategies not to change the lot sizes in the single-family zones yet. So we've really been strategizing on what we want to see in the city for growth and where we want to see density happen in the city. But we've not had, to my knowledge, any discussions on changing a 7,000-square-foot traditional single-family lot to a 5,000-square-foot traditional single-family lot. So as far as I know, that may not be part of the final document when it comes out at the end of the year or early next. But I think we're targeting the end of the year for the document to be completed.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for that. Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for that, for that update. Any other comments by my colleagues?
I guess you'd welcome our newest associate board member, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. John Nixon, Mr. Nixon, welcome to the board. It was a very active and productive meeting, so I wish you well and welcome to the team and I think you do great work.
Welcome to the team. And now's the time where you have to do, sing your alma mater, your college alma mater song, so take it away. It's the general hazing thing.
Thank, thank you, everyone. If there's no further questions, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Hubby. To adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you, have a good night, folks.